Okay, we are moving right along on our agenda. We are down to item number 11. And this is going to be a follow-up from the March 25th, 2024 City Council Water Commission Joint Meeting. I remember that like it was last week. I'll let staff take it away. Erin?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. I need a minute to pull up the talk.
No worries. Take your time.
Thank you.
We'll just stare at you impatiently.
We do have a handout for each of you that is coming from either the clerk or from Lisa Dean. We made some changes to the draft presentation that's in your packet, and I wanted you to have a hard copy. There's enough information in there that I felt it would be helpful.
Wonderful. We'll take a look at that as you're getting ready. Is this available to Councilmember House by chance?
I can provide it to her by email as soon as I turn the talk over to Carol.
Okay, wonderful.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. Erin Young, Water Resources Manager. We are back in front of you this evening after our meeting last week, and we had some questions and further discussions, so we're prepared for that tonight. Thank you so much. We'll be reviewing Water Rate Option 3 and the comparison that you requested us to make, and then we'll have a discussion on reclaimed water rates. And at the end, we'll also provide you with where we're at in the process in some more detail about what options you have, once we bring that full rate package to you on April 16th. With that, I'll turn it over to Carol. Hello, Carol. Nice to see you.
Good afternoon, Erin, and good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of council. It's good to see you all again, although virtually. Thank you, Erin, for the introduction. As you all remember probably quite vividly, last week, we reviewed a Water Rate Option 3 with a revision, so that's what I would like to go over next. And Erin, are you controlling the slides? I think you are. Thank you. First, we'd like to talk quickly about what we presented regarding the Water Rate Structure Options. If you recall, we presented three different options, and at the end of our session, we had quite a few of you and the Water Commission members that preferred Option 3, but with a request to evaluate a little bit of a difference in the single-family rate tiers. So this is just a reminder of what Option 3 looks like. The table on the left shows the monthly fixed charges by water meter size that everyone would pay, assuming you will recover the 25% minimum of your revenue from these fixed charges. So that's a minimum per policy. We're showing you, again, the inside-city rates only. Outside-city rates have a 10% surcharge. So you'll see that for the fixed charge, the annual cost recovery for fiscal year 2025 is $4 million, 4.24 million. The table on the right shows the volume metric or usage rate structure for Option 3. This is where we showed the single-family tiers. You have four tiers that you charge single-family residents for their water usage. Tier 1 is for usage up to 3,500 gallons of water a month. Tier 2 is greater than 3,500 gallons, up to 6,200 gallons a month. And then Tier 3 is greater than 6,200 gallons per month, up to 11,500. The top tier, Tier 4, is for any usage above 11,500 gallons a month. So customers pay incrementally as they use more water. The current rate is shown in that middle column, so this is what customers currently pay for each tier. The tier price ratio shown here is not the current price ratio, but it is that price ratio associated with Option 3. And you could see the rates that recover the single-family residential costs of service in that last column. So you'll see that the Tier 1 rate would be $4.48, and so on. In Option 3, we also presented the cost-of-service-based volume rates, so charges per 1,000 gallons of water usage, for each of the customer classes based on their use of the system. So multifamily customers, every rate you'll see is an increase. So multifamily customers, commercial and schools, landscaping, et cetera. What you do see is those two orange highlights, which indicates the Option 3 version where we have combined, or we're suggesting to combine, the commercial, schools, and institutional customers. So this would combine them into a commercial/schools class. So that rate would be $5.88 per 1,000 gallons for all of these customers. The total recovery of revenue for fiscal year 2025 in this option is $12.72 million. We hold this basic approach constant for the next version on the next slide. This next slide shows all of the options, but it shows for Option 3 revised, that very last column, that we have revised the tier ratios for the first tier and the third tier to reflect the comments from last week. The same concept and the same goals are met with Option 3 revised for the single-family tiers. This means that we are looking to set the volume rates for indoor usage, so efficient indoor usage for both small and large families in those rates that we show for Tier 1 and Tier 2. The peaking, or the extra-capacity costs that are driven by peak usage, so usage typically outside, are recovered through Tiers 3 and 4. That's where we derived the price ratios of 2 times the Tier 2 rate for the Tier 3 rate, and 4 times the Tier 2 rate. What we are, in essence, doing here is setting the first two tiers to recover the base costs of service for indoor water usage and pushing the peaking costs to Tiers 3 and 4. The remaining volume rates for multifamily, commercial, and schools, et cetera, are the same as what I just discussed for Option 3. So we show that, just the differences from what we presented last week. One of the questions that came out of the discussions from last week was, "This is great. We see rates, and we provided some average bill impacts, but what does this mean for certain customers, and what does this mean going forward?" So for full visibility here, we're showing the revised rate Option 3, and we're pulling some typical bills, or representative bills, from fiscal year 23's billing data. So we went back into the billing data, and we're showing by customer class what their representative meter size is. So this isn't the average meter size, or the most common, or the mode, or median. It's basically the representative. So you'll see that we show a single-family residential customer has a 3/4-inch water meter, and that typical or average customer uses 4,000 gallons of water a month. That 4,000 gallons, when applied to your current rate structure, so for this fiscal year, the monthly water bill just for water usage, this does not include the water energy fee, or the water protection fee, or taxes. It's simply water fixed charges plus the water usage charges. We get an average bill for the single-family user of $30.91. If you follow that to the right, we see the total bills for this proposed Option 3 revised for the next five fiscal years. So fiscal year 2025, beginning in September of this year, September of 2024, that would go all the way to December of 2025. Then the next year would start in January. That's the fiscal year 2026. So then you go subsequent years after that. We see the total bill calculated in the first column for each of these three columns by year. And you'll see that the largest impact for most customers is in this first fiscal year, and that is due to the alignment of your costs to serve your customers to those customer-class usages. So that's why we're showing you the dollar change per month, and what that percentage change is for that representative bill. A single-family resident who uses 4,000 gallons a month would see in 2025, so the next first change would be a $1.13 increase in their bill per month, which is a 3.7% increase. Thereafter, so for 2026 through 2029, we see a 15% increase. And this is consistent with the... This is consistent with the proposed and recommended rate plan back in October that would fully fund your water CIP. So this is the 15% change in the bills that you'll see going forward. I'm going to talk through the rest of the examples and then pause for questions. On the multifamily side, we see that the representative meter size is a 1-inch meter, and that the average monthly volume of usage is 9,000 gallons. That bill would be today $59.38 just for the water fixed charge plus the usage component. Given the cost-of-service results and the Option 3 revised, we see that bill going up by $5.21 for the month, and that would be an 8.8% increase. And subsequent years, then again, would be a 15% increase year over year. For commercial and schools, the representative meter size is, again, a 1-inch meter, but the usage is much higher. It's up 40,000 gallons. And I know Councilmember Matthews asked about that particular customer. We went back into our data, and we looked to see that that is the average billed volume for commercial customers in fiscal year 2023. That current water bill would increase by $47.88 for that particular customer each month. That's a 23.1% increase. Thereafter, the bills would increase by 15% per year. So you see a pattern. Once we align the rates in the next fiscal year to the costs of service and the new rate structure, thereafter, it's a straight-across-the-board 15% increase to generate those revenues to pay for your capital projects. The landscape customers demonstrate the largest increase because of the costs of service. So this particular customer has a 1-inch meter with 24,000 gallons of use. That monthly bill would go up by almost $140 a month for that customer, which is 105.9% increase. That is the largest increase demonstrated in our examples here. If that water user uses less water in a month, the impact, of course, would be less. Manufacturing customers have a 1.5-inch meter as the representative size, and with a usage of 73,000 gallons a month, that increase yields a $74.50 increase in that monthly bill the first year, which is a 20.4% increase. And finally, the institutional class, the representative meter size is 8 inches. That is the largest customer. You have an 8-inch meter is the largest type of customer. The usage is over 2 million gallons for one month, which is a lot of usage. So this is a very large account, and therefore their bill is very large, and therefore their impact is large. So you'll see the current bill, under current rates for this customer, is about $9,500. That would increase under the new rate structure and new cost-of-service allocations to $3,000, by $3,600, which is a 37.9% increase. Thereafter, it would level out to the 15% increases over time. You see that overall, we're still expecting you to generate an increase in revenues for fiscal year 25 of approximately 12%. And you might ask, "Well, why is it greater than 30% in some cases, and less than 10% in another?" That is because of the cost-of-service analysis. We're looking at not only increasing your revenues in fiscal year 2025 to meet your operating and capital needs, but we're also aligning each customer class to their proportional impact on the system. That was a lot of information, and in the next few slides, I have some narrative as to what we just reviewed for Option 3 revised. If you have any questions, we can pause, or I can continue.
Counsel, it looks like we do have questions. I will take Councilmember Matthews first.
Thank you. Carol, on the water fixed charge, is that amount factored into these proposals here? Like, you're showing, if you go back to, probably easier to go back to, the slide that showed the different single-family residents and stuff. When you show an increase on Tier 1 from $3.44 to $4.48, that really isn't giving us the whole recovery cost, right? Because they also have that fixed rate.
Oh, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Matthews, that is exactly correct. That this chart just shows the comparison of the volume rates. Because for Options 1 through 3 revised, the fixed charges do not vary. And those would be on the slide right before this one. So that chart on the left shows the last column is the proposed fixed charge under all of these options.
So for a consumer or a business to, before the modeling that you're going to put up on the website comes live, they would have to add, like for a 3/4-inch pipe or meter, $14.33 plus the per-thousand-gallon charge of $4.48, correct?
Councilmember Matthews, that is correct, and that will be on that rate calculator. It will be done automatically once the meter size and water usage is entered. I wanted to make another comment, Erin. If we could go to the actual bill projections as well? Back to the... Yes. These dollar values include those fixed charges. We just couldn't fit it all onto one slide, so we condensed it to the total bill. You had seen last week a breakout of that new fixed bill plus the volume charge. So to save space, we just combined it into a total bill. But they do include both the fixed charge for those meter sizes plus the usage charges.
Okay, that's helpful. And then my other questions can wait to the end, but just one real quick. Can you remind me again what our total capital improvement budget is?
If you give me a minute, I could find it. But yes, I can tell you what that is for the five-year period.
Sounds like a tattered question.
Vic shaking his head.
No, he's not touching that one.
You do have it. It just took me a second to pull it up.
Do you want to move on and then just give it to me at the end?
I think that's a great idea.
Wonderful. Councilmember Harris?
Okay, so a couple of questions, and I'm gonna, I'm not sure who I'm looking at, but whatever. I'm gonna focus on helping, how are we gonna help people lower their bills? Okay, so let me just do some scenarios, and then you kind of talk me through. So is there any way possible with this chart, with this, what we're doing, that a person's bill will not go up? Is there any way possible that that could happen, and if so, under what circumstances?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Harris, there is, and that would be for, I would say there's two examples. The first example, I believe that Erin calculated that a user, a residential user, that consumed 2,450 gallons of water a month or less would actually see a decrease in that monthly bill. That 2,450 gallons is about a break-even point to where the bill does not go up. The second case would be if the user severely reduces consumption, so conserves for that month, they could potentially maintain a bill. We have not calculated that for the rest of the customer types, but severe conservation could result in either a small increase or a no increase at all. We did not calculate the bills for every type of user, so there could be a multifamily account with a 3/4-inch meter, possibly using quite a bit less volume. That bill could not change. It is, I just don't have that for the other customer types, but it is possible.
Okay, so I know everyone's not gonna do this. Everyone's not gonna go to that consuming, that lower-consuming level. But for those folks, well, let me ask this question. When you did the modeling and you did the single-family, did you look at a single-family with one person, or a single-family with, what's the average, four? I don't know.
So Vice Mayor and Councilmember Harris, the average household size in Flagstaff is 2.4 people. We actually did do some calculations for that, and that would, Erin, I think that's on the next slide.
Okay.
We calc... Yes.
Go ahead.
This slide summarizes some of our philosophy and backup to the establishment of those single-family first-two-tier rates. We calculated that the essential use that is indoor usage is approximately 50 gallons per person per day in a house. So if you have, and this one actually shows 2.3 people per household in this narrative, but it essentially says that if you have 2.3 people per household using 50 gallons per person per day, you could stay in that first tier. You could stay within the first tier. And then if you have a larger household size, so even up to five people per household using 50 gallons per person per day in a month, you could stay within that second tier, so under the 6,200 gallons of water usage per month. We addressed that varying household size by setting the first tier and second tier rates. Well, we set the second tier rate at the average cost-of-service rate per 1,000 gallons in the whole system. And then we calculated a lower Tier 1 rate to offset that lower usage, and then that also increased the rate for Tier 3 based on just this latest revision to this option. Is that what you were requesting? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, that's some of it. So then my final comment is that if we have seniors and young families living on fixed incomes, so maybe a single person or an elderly person that's living on a fixed income, then if they're trying to keep their expenses to where they were before, not rise in terms of water, they could do a lot of conserving, and they could not have that impact, right? And understanding that all 70,000, or how many ever there is of us, there are of us, you know, in this city, we're all not gonna do that. But it might be helpful to see if some of our other offices or programs could maybe put something together that would help those folks who may be experiencing some hardship. And I know that there are programs, but a lot of people are very proud. And if they can do something themselves, they'd rather do it themselves than ask for help. And so if we could provide some information that would be helpful to them, I think that that would help people. Because we know we have to do this. That's just, but we can help some folks. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Great questions and great comments. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you. I don't have any questions, but I have some suggestions on how to make this mass of numbers more understandable. For instance, on the chart that's up right now, if I understand correctly, that is the total bill, which equals the volume charge plus the fixed charge. Is that correct? Well, we should say that. We should say that on that chart. Because unless we write it on there, we don't know. Could you go, Erin? Could you go back one slide? Okay, so on this one, this one says "volume charge." That's good. Thank you. Erin, back one more. And this one, where it says "current rate and fixed charge," blah, blah. We should write on there that this is the fixed meter charge. I believe that's what that is. So we should label that, and that'll make this way easier to understand. The other thing I did to my copy is I drew some lines, because all of these just blend together. So Erin, after the meeting, and I'll show you what I've done to mine. And I'm always saying this because it'll help people that try to understand this, understand it better. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Erin, I'm just wondering if you can remind us, how long has it been since we have done this process and looked at the rates?
A little history just off the top of my head. I mean, 2015 is still pretty fresh in my mind. So we went through water and sewer rates at that time, and then punted reclaimed water to 2016. And at that time, we didn't fully fund the CIP. And then 2010 was when we lasted the cost-of-service study. And in 2015, the rate consultant looked at the comparisons of revenue to each pot of customer class, and they were close enough that they didn't, we could go with the rate study without adjusting cost of service. So the last time that was truly done was in 2010.
Thank you. That helps me when I look at the numbers. I mean, there are considerable jumps here, but we haven't really had this in a few years. So we know we need to do it, and I just want to remind everyone that we're kind of playing catch-up. Thank you.
Yeah. If we were to move forward as presented, it would be a true catch-up in terms of the full CIP and not coming down like we have in the past. And I don't know the last time we fully funded a CIP with a rate increase, so.
Thank you.
Erin, I'm so glad that 2015 is still fresh in your mind. It's definitely not fresh in mine. Councilmember Harris?
I just want to make a comment about this. You know, we all know that we have to do this. We don't have a choice, and I get that. I totally understand that. But what I'm asking us to do is to think about the folks in our community who are gonna be impacted by this. That little bit makes a big difference in somebody's budget. So all I'm asking is that we take a little bit more time to try and get more information out to people. Now, whether they use it or not is up to them. But at least if we can get that out to them in terms of ways that they can save, because I'm gonna be thinking... because I'm gonna be thinking about that myself. So if we can think about ways that they can save, ways that they can cut their consumption that they may not have even thought about, then that will be helpful to them. And so, Councilmember, I really do hear what you're saying. I definitely hear that. And we don't have a choice. We have to do this. But we can also think about how we can help our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, I hear what you're saying as well. You know, for a lot of people in this community, $1 change in the budget can mean the difference between getting a haircut that month or buying a loaf of bread. So these things really matter at one end of the scale, a lot more than they do at the other. I just appreciate you being cognizant of that and bringing voice to it. Erin, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I think we can proceed.
Okay. Yeah, so what are we looking at here?
Carol, you want to take it away with the council direction?
Sure. At this point, we would like to get your opinions on the direction for the actual Option 3 revised versus the previous Option 3, which is the change to the single-family volume tier rates.
All right. I support Option 3 revised. And why do I do that? Because it lowers the cost for people that are really good conservers, people that are using less water. It rewards them. And Councilmember Harris was pointing out that, you know, sometimes people on fixed incomes have a, the impact of higher costs would be damaging to them. So the lower rate for the lowest tier would reward people that are willing to conserve and allow people that need to conserve money as a way of saving money. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My rub on that is we are encouraging people to do share housing. We also have people that, for financial reasons, have their parents, grandparents, or the kids living with them because they're struggling. And I just don't feel like we're capturing those people. We're looking at tier-three thinking, well, those are the big users. Well, why are they the big users? I do a shared house upstairs, and now I'm reconsidering, you know, giving my tenants the upstairs because of all these increases in our stormwater and our water rates. So I just want to just put a voice to that, that it's, tier-three is not the water hogs. They're people trying to survive up here in Flagstaff in some cases. And I just don't, I don't feel like I see that we've really examined who those people are in our community and how this is gonna impact them. They're not the Pine Canyon residents. They're people trying to make it and getting creative to make it. And I just, I'm frustrated that we're faced with this necessary capital improvement rate increase because other councils have kicked this can down the road. And now, I mean, we are moving so quickly to the haves and the have-nots to be an elitist community because if you didn't buy a house a few years ago, you're not. Or even rent, because you don't just have the rent, but you have really high utilities. And I just, I'm just really struggling with all of this. And I know we have, you know, these projects are necessary. And I know I've asked this before about, we've had in some of the budget presentations that we've carved out money for debt servicing. But for some reason in my brain, I don't have it, I'm such a visual to see, well, what projects were that? And can we, could we reduce some of the projects for these next five years? Given that I still am not convinced that we have the manpower to fulfill all these capital projects. And can we just take a pause and just look at, can we space them out more? You know, I know we gotta do it now. And I'll go and, you know, throat punch, as my pastor says. Others that'll push us down the line, because now we are faced with a really impactful increase. And it's not your fault, it's not Carol's fault, it's not Shannon's fault. It's the fault of, you know, past management, you know, councils that didn't want to pull the Band-Aid off and do these. And now it's a big, big number. It's like 80 or 90 million dollars, if I remember. I can't wait to get the number. But it's a lot of money, and, you know, we have other resources out there and stuff. But I just, I feel sick to my stomach thinking about these unintended consequences that we're gonna see once this goes into place. And I really feel like there's gonna be a big unintended consequence. So I just, I just needed to say that. I'm sitting here just really, you know, getting anxious about it, because I just don't feel good about any of this.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I suppose at the end of the day, the unfortunate reality of that is that if we were to delay this, we would be the punching bag of a later council with the same complaints. I agree that this is a tough position for us to be in. And what I would blame is, without getting into it too much, I think tax rates have been too low and too fought over for far too long at every level of government in a way that has us pinching pennies at the local level, and it's a disservice in the end to our pocketbooks as a community, with state revenues being so fought over and tax monies being given back to taxpayers in the form of tax breaks, et cetera, et cetera. That's definitely a longer conversation. I don't want to get too drawn out into that. I would say that I'm with Councilmember McCarthy myself on the revised Option 3, for all the reasons he mentioned, and also for the reason that this was the result of the input of our Water Commission, which I highly value, and I think that input should be registered in the final product here. You know, and I, one thing I'll just say in conclusion, and I've said this before, at the end of the day, when someone in Flagstaff wakes up in the morning, what do they expect from their city? They expect the garbage to be picked up, they expect the streetlights to work, and they expect their water to turn on when they go to flip that faucet. Those are the three things that they're feel, whether or not they are, they feel absolutely entitled to those services. And without these hard conversations and this difficult decision in front of us, we are endangering the city's primary, primordial function of keeping the water running. I think that's where we're really at with these conversations. And we wouldn't be having these tough decisions about these hefty rate increases if that weren't the case. I don't think that our city and our management team and our leadership and Carol and our advisors came to these numbers lightly. It's definitely a do-or-die sort of situation for us right now. I'll leave my comments there. I see Councilmember Sweet has her hand up. And Carol, I know that you have some comments in the chat box. I'll let you refer to those, voice those out loud at some point here, too.
I have another question. So when we decide today with direction, do we have an opportunity to change the course down the road?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Sweet, today you're giving us direction on one piece for water. And on April 16th, we're bringing this back for all the different areas as a rates package. And then you'll have the opportunity to review everything in its entirety at that point in time. And you can have those discussions, well, what are the levers that you have? What are the assumptions within this rate study that you might consider adjusting? Or what's the, what are the results of maybe adjusting some of those? Does it, do they, are they impactful? So that will be presented on April 16th. And then we have some meetings in May where we could come back and further see results of those changes, if you will. We need to be a bit careful with how we provide direction to STANTEC. So if they're making adjustments, hopefully they're making it one time, maybe two, but it takes a lot of work. So we'll do our best to guide you through that process if you're having heartburn at some point.
We all definitely have heartburn. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Erin, just another quick suggestion, and it kind of ties into what Councilmember Harris said. You and I had a conversation about, you know, I have a lot of fruit trees. I grow my own vegetables at a greenhouse. And, you know, now, you know, because I'm, you know, painfully aware of all this, I do a rain capture little program, but it's really small. But now I'm gonna step it up just for my budget. So my point is that things like that, I'd really like to ask staff and sustainability and other department partners to maybe also start brainstorming already about how we can help our community save money. Because once again, some of those big water users are people that are growing their own food, growing their own, you know, having their own trees. I have seven trees that are fruit-bearing. And, you know, I know that there's a lot of people that have, you know, that are wanting to be sustainable and grow their own, you know, a lot of their own food. And we don't want to have an unintended consequence of people stopping to do that because they have to cut back so much on water. So I'm trying to be ahead of the game myself, but I think if we maybe had more of a rebate program for some of our residents or people with a lower income, help them other ways to think about things that maybe they didn't care about before. And this is a great way for us to achieve not only our water conservation goals, but to also help us reach our sustainability goals and other things by making it more of a win-win all the way around. So just coming up with creative ideas and programs that can help our people that are more on a budget or people that want to live off the land a little bit better. I'll never forget a woman that I ran into at the, I forgot what the program was, but she lost her house because her husband had passed away. She didn't have a mortgage. She'd bought her house in Southside. She didn't know or have the access to the internet and didn't know there was programs out there and lost her house because she couldn't pay the property taxes and she was foreclosed upon, and then she was living in her car. So by then, it was kind of too late to help her out as far as saving her house. But I just feel like this could be another one of those really sad stories that we hear in a couple of years because somebody just didn't know the resources out there. So I just encourage you and our other departments to, as we go through this, we know there's gonna be some kind of rate increase, that we also look at ways we can help our community and reach, you know, other goals to make this a more productive, healthy community.
Absolutely. Councilmember Harris, one last comment. That's what she said. I'm just repeating it.
One last comment, I promise. So when I'm asking staff to do things, I'm not asking you to do a whole bunch more work. What I'm asking people to do is to think creatively outside of the box. And we don't have to make it fancy. We can just put ideas on a piece of paper or a card or whatever. There are gonna be three resilience hubs in this community. And getting that information to those three resilience hubs so that they can get it out to the three historically underrepresented neighborhoods where they're gonna be located would be really, really helpful. And so that's how we can use other resources or other organizations to help us get that word out to people. And again, if they use it, great. If they don't, at least we know we put it in their hands. Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure we have direction yet. Erin, do we need to go around the room and sort of clarify that? I think my position is clear. I think Councilmember McCarthy spoke. And I think we need to hear on the record from the rest of folks where they're at specifically.
Vice Mayor, I am Option 3 revised for the same reasons that Councilmember McCarthy stated.
I'm with that, too.
Actually, it looks like we have consensus on that. Councilmember House had to step away, and the mayor's not with us this afternoon. Carol, thank you so much. I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add. You did have something in the comments. I really appreciate everything you've done, your organization, and the expertise that you bring to this gives us a lot of confidence moving forward, even as we are anxious about what this is gonna mean for our community. Love your team setup there, by the way, too. You look like a Ramarent painting with us this afternoon. Do you have any, anything to add?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. I do, and in response to Councilmember Matthews' question about the water capital plan, over the next five years, we're looking at $208 million. So it is a large number. And I also would like to offer a couple other things. I really need to thank your staff. So Erin, Erin Young and her group have been instrumental in all of this. So they've been working extremely hard to help us through this. We do have the second piece of our presentation, if there are, but I do thank you for your direction on the water rate structure.
Yeah, I think, let's move on.
Okay, great. We are next going to go back to the reclaimed water rates. If you recall from last week, we were proposing that the reclaimed water rates remain at that policy level of a certain percentage of potable water. And there was a request to take another look at that. The schedule that you're seeing, the two schedules you're seeing in front of you, the top table are the volumetric rates for reclaimed water currently. And then the bottom table are the proposed reclaimed water rates for fiscal year 2025. What we don't show you here, and we could add this to another table, is that reclaimed water customers also pay those fixed monthly rates by water meter size. So they do pay an additional charge for monthly fixed charges. The schedules that we show here for the volumetric usage are based on potable water. And they're not just a percentage of the potable water volume rate. There's a fancy math that is the potable water rate for a certain class. So private residential, for example, would be based on the potable water rates for single-family residential by tier. But we add in the energy rate. So that currently, it's $1.21 per 1,000 gallons. We take the potable water rate plus the $1.21 for energy and then take 35% of that rate. So the rates that you see, if you try to just take the straight potable water rate multiplied by 35%, you will not get the results here. You need to add in that $1.21 of the energy rate. The table at the bottom, the proposed reclaimed water rates, are based on Option 3 revised in anticipation of your direction. So the rates here would go up by that same percentage that the, that the potable water rates are, with the exception of the $1.21 energy rate. Next, we'd like to talk about this, because there were some questions regarding, well, you know, why don't we increase these percentages of potable water rate? What are typical practices? Didn't you do any analysis? And I would like to just review that we did not discuss this last week, but STANTEC did start a water, reclaimed water cost of service analysis. We ended up We ended up pausing that. This was back in December when we had discussions with staff regarding the city's policy of charging reclaimed water rates based on that percentage of the potable water rates. So we paused our discussion. However, when we were compiling the, the base budgets from finance and from staff, and when we were looking at the options for the projected capital improvement project needs, we determined that the current reclaimed water rate revenue and the projected reclaimed water rate revenue under the scenario that was provided to us, that was the guidance from last October, we see that these rate revenues recover the costs of operations and maintenance that are allocated for reclaimed water. So your staff take a proportion of the distribution system costs, so to get the water to the customers, a share of the costs at the Wildcat Reclamation Facility for production of reclaimed water. Same thing for a share of costs of production at the Rio Facility. So these are all recovered through that, the current reclaimed water rate and the projected reclaimed water rate. We also include a proportion of operating capital. This means repairs and maintenance of pumps, replacements of equipment that are needed to provide reclaimed water to your customers. The rates also recover a portion of those shared services costs. So these are the costs that, that each enterprise fund, so water, wastewater, reclaimed water and stormwater, pay to have city services such as finance and human resources, IT, the billing for these services. These are all shared by the enterprise funds and those costs are included in this cost of service for reclaimed water. So these are all part of that rate, and it's about $1.1 million currently of reclaimed water rate revenue. When we were providing some scenarios last fall, just like for water and wastewater, if the full capital improvement program was funded, so that would include the approved capital project list, the informed project list from master plans, and the unfunded CIP projects that had been unfunded for years, that rate increase would be extremely large, particularly in the first year of the plan. And that would exceed those policy limits on what you could set your reclaimed water rates to. So when we scale back to that current policy for different percentages of the potable water rate, the current and projected reclaimed water rates still recover a portion of the capital improvement projects. It's just not the entire 69 million over five years. It's more like 11 million over the next five years. So that's, that's something that we wanted to reiterate and make sure you understood. And Mr. Tatter was very clear on that last week, but I wanted to reiterate this. The, the next slide discusses some additional information that you were provided for some previous, so this was the adopted policies for reclaimed waters. You could read these sections. But then also there was some other material provided that looked at historical analyses of reclaimed water. West Water Research did a study of reclaimed water pricing and the economic value of reclaimed water. So that was back in 2021. I'm not sure if you've gotten a chance to read these documents, but they're really informative and help understand the value of reclaimed water in the city and across the state. And I have to say, part of the, another reference is one of STANTEC's own products where we surveyed reclaimed water utilities across the United States. But that also was referenced in the West Water Research memo. On the next slide, we wanted to talk to you about what you felt on approaching reclaimed water and pricing policies. We wanted to have a discussion about the pricing of reclaimed water currently to recover your reclaimed water costs. And also to determine, is, are there any changes that you see that you would like to investigate so that we could bring that back to you on April 16th? As you can see from the slide, we have two options that we're posing for you today. We always give you options. Option one is to leave the policy as is, to charge the reclaimed water rates at a percentage of potable water rates plus that energy charge. So this would be allowing you to continue forward with still raising those reclaimed water rates. They would still go up based on the, the water rate increases. And you would still be able to fund a small amount of projects, capital projects. But you could continue to negotiate with your customers that are, that have contracts with the city. And you could still look to valuing that reclaimed water resource and determine what your path forward would be. I know there have been some phrases that we've heard, kick the can down the road, et cetera. And this is, this is really a matter of seeking some, the next step. So taking one step at a time for reclaimed water. So still increase those reclaimed water rates at this moment, but then look for further revisions going forward and coming back to you for further discussion. Our second option was to actually increase that percentage of the reclaimed water rate that is of the, the potable water rate. So as an example, the table that we showed you earlier had many of the different customer types. Their reclaimed water rate is set to 35% of the potable water rate plus the energy rate. A 1% increase in that percentage of the potable water rate would generate some additional revenue. And actually, Erin doesn't know this, but I did the calculations. And it, it varies. It's not, if you increase the percent of potable water by 1%, you'd think that the rate, the revenue would increase by 1%, but that's not true. It actually goes up higher than, it's approximately 2%. So you get a 2% increase in your rate revenue, which for reclaimed water is approximately $30, $30,000 a year. What does $30,000 a year get us? Well, you won't accomplish too many projects. However, any increase in revenue could help support the, all of the existing operating capital, bolster fund balances for the next project, reduce the borrowing, if there's additional borrowing, or reduce the current debt payments. So there are benefits to increasing revenue collection on that reclaimed water side. And most of it is to prepare for the next step. So prepare for potentially funding another project that in the current plan may not be So I'm going to pause here and ask you if you, if you'd like to talk through these. Does it, does it make sense to adjust that percentage of that potable water rate?
Counsel?
So I do have some thoughts on this. I'm, I'm leaning towards option one. I don't want to kick the can down the road too, too far, but I do feel like this is a very big discussion. And I don't want to squeeze it into what we're trying to accomplish in this other rate study. As long as I can have an idea that this won't be too in the distant future, that we have this larger conversation. I don't believe that a 1% increase and kind of willy-nilly doing that tonight is where I want to go. I want to have a meaningful, robust conversation. Thank you.
Let's go around the room here.
Okay, thank you. I definitely think that we should bring reclaimed water planning back to council. And like Ms. Sweet said, you know, I'm not envisioning two years from now, I'm envisioning, you know, not like two weeks from now, something on the order of six months or whatever. And I philosophically think that reclaimed water should pay for their cost of services just like everybody else does. As far as the 1% now, I'm kind of ambivalent on that one way or the other. But I do think that we need to study reclaimed water rates in detail and do that fairly soon based on cost of service. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, you know, ambivalent's a good word for this, but not disinterested. You know, I would support option two, I think. I can understand the reasons why to do that. I also very much can appreciate why folks around this table wouldn't want to go there quite yet. So I'm not sure where that puts me. I suppose I'm a supporter of option two, but I completely understand if, if council takes a different direction on this.
I'm going to go with option one to bring it back. I guess that's, yeah, well, we're going to, yeah, bring it, bring it back to us. In, I think six months would be good.
I'm also in favor of option one, and I think that definitely we need more of a robust conversation about it to understand what projects are really needed or desired, what the benefits, we know the benefits, but for each project, how far down the line that'll get us. So I think it's a more detailed conversation instead of just throwing out a 1% or let's do 2%. Okay, maybe four. You know, I'd like it to be a little bit more purposeful and really understand, so the public understands, like, when we do this rate increase, what does that do to, you know, our, our water sources as a whole? And just as a side note, I would like to see when we visit this, I think it's on the I'd love to also have a calculator for the stormwater rates that we've approved last year that no one's felt the effects of, because I really want to have, I'm a visual, and I really want to see the overall, you know, that's kind of been forgotten, not from, from me, but people aren't paying attention to it. And I think that we really need to see the full impact. And then for me personally, I'd like to see our budget of project costs, what's going out to bond or federal grant money. You know, just a little bit more detail. I know you guys must have it, but just a, a projected project capital improvement budget, where the funds are coming from outside of the rate payers and what projects they are. I know we've been, we've been given a list of the capital projects, but just really carving them out, what's, what we anticipate that will be paid for by future and past bonds and just the overall picture to help me, since I'm a numbers person. So if you could do that, that'd be great.
Just a bit of philosophy, as I've said before, Red Hill said that water is water is water. And what does that mean? That means that we should not be encouraging more and more use of reclaimed water because at some point, we're going to need that reclaimed water to make potable water. That might be direct use, or it might be recharging the aquifer or whatever, but we're going to need that water in the future. So we don't want people to get in the habit of going, oh, wow, this water's really cheap. I'm going to grow Bermuda grass or whatever.
Vice Mayor and council, thank you. You've provided us the direction we asked for. And Carol, thank you. I think you're off the hook here. I just have a couple updates for council. I took in a lot of information from the discussion tonight, so thank you. In public outreach, just wanting to note, this big event for us on April 8th at the East Flagstaff Community Library, a lot of water services team members will be there to talk to the public about what it is we do in water services. We can provide them with their, we'll have the rate calculator where we can type in people's information and give them the, the difference for the next five years for water and sewer. The rate calculator, we don't think it'll be ready yet. It might look kind of like this example from Gilbert. They'll just enter in some information and it'll spit out the updated rates. We'll let you know when the rate calculator is ready. The Daily Sun did publish our press release. However, they had April 1st. Yeah, so they're updating that for us. And we notified the East Flagstaff Library that it wasn't yesterday. I don't know, maybe that was an April fool's joke from the Daily Sun. I don't know if they'd be that mean. So please attend our event on, next Monday. Well, yeah, we, we're missing some staff because they'll be in Texas, so.
Please do.
Erin, on your sample for the calculator, I noticed it here on one of your slides. We have three tiers, four tiers for single-family residents. Then this, I'm assuming is the, is the example of a single-family residence with 4,000 gallon usage a month. So that doesn't really tell them if they're in tier one, two, three, or four.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I, I know that it'd be probably really complicated to add those tiers in, but it's going to, it's going to be meaningful to people whether they're in tier one or tier four. So maybe an asterisk to tell them, there's going to be some variations because the pricing is, since we're putting a lot more rate increase on tier three and tier four, it would, it might be a little deceiving if they came with a large family and it said, "single-family resident," and they thought, oh, that's not too much. So just somehow let them know, give them a worksheet to take home or something and say, okay, but if your family size is this, you might be in this other tier.
We will do our best. We will do it somehow, whether it's a footnote, letting people know what the tiers are. And if they enter 7,000 gallons into the calculator, they'll be able to look underneath and be like, okay, I can see some of my usage is in that tier three. But we're, I'm not sure it can actually be in the calculator. I think we talked about it and it was pretty complex, but Carol shaking her head, yeah, but we'll make.
Just so that they're aware.
Yes.
That they're just not thinking, well, I'm in this one bucket of single-family residents. There's four tiers. So just to make sure they're very clear on there's going to be that variance.
Okay.
Erin, anything coming up on Earth Day? I noticed we're, we kind of have some things posted for April here. I didn't see that, but I'm sure you got something going on.
Yeah, we will be tabling, Vice Mayor, we will be tabling at Earth Day for the rate study. The rate calculator should be ready at that point. And we'll have information about how the different increases will have handouts and such, so. And we're, we'll be collecting comments, comment cards. People can go into our website and add comments. And I just wanted to go over next steps in a little bit more detail since we're getting to, kind of towards the end here. April 16th, that notice of intention to change rates and fees, STANTEC will present the entire rates package. And that'll include the five-year rate schedules, impact to customer classes, so that you have the information you need to fully consider the proposals. And the draft report of the rate study will be released, posted to the website on the 19th. That's a requirement by, by law. And we'll ask, if you want to review that report, you're welcome to. We'll share that with the Water Commission on April 18th. And we can take comment on the report. May 7th, we're scheduled to, to check in with you on that date. You can provide us your feedback and we'll keep working through this as an iterative process through May. And May 21st would be the, a check-in with city council. And actually, I'm sorry, June 4th would be the last update to city council before that first read. So that is some, any, any questions about the process that we can answer? Or any requests? Thank you.
Erin, yeah, I think we're done. You know, I had high praise for Carol earlier, and she kicked that over to you guys. I definitely want to reiterate that and echo that as well. Erin, Shannon, all of our staff, leadership and the water team, just so reliant upon you. just so reliant upon you. And thank you for all the hard work. And thank you for all the, the deep dives you've been doing, the extra hours you've put into this and all the extra hours you're going to put into this. Very much appreciated.
Thank you for that recognition. We appreciate it.
Okay, I'd like to push through here.